Okay, we're ready. Okay. Everyone good? Call the meeting of the St. Paul City Council to order. Roll call, please. Joest.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Bowie.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Council President Naker.
Here.
Seven present, no one absent.
Thanks so much to everyone for bearing with us and for joining us for our city council meeting today. We invite everyone to join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda items three through sixteen are before you for your consideration.
I know that we are taking item sixteen for separate consideration. Is there anything else to come up with consent? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Chair Johnson to approve the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The consent agenda is adopted as amended. Item sixteen is Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen forty-three, supporting Taiko Arts Midwest's general obligation bond request, project request.
Vice President Kim.
Thank you. Um, we have very eager speakers.
A resolution who is here, so maybe we can invite the executive director of Taiko Arts Midwest up.
Welcome up.
Welcome.
Thanks for being here.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, so Taiko, if you don't know.
Sorry, would you just start with your name and where you're coming from?
I'm Jennifer Weir. I'm the executive director of Taiko Arts Midwest. I'm here on behalf of a building at four-four-nine Front Avenue in North End, St. Paul.
Thank you.
Taiko drumming, for those of you who don't know, is Japanese drumming. It's an art form that's evolved over centuries. The drums are very large, and when you play them, you play with your whole body. So it's very much like a combination of dance, martial arts, athletics, culture, healing, connection, all of those things involved in learning and performing this art form. But what makes it so dynamic to the performers, to the practitioners, and to the audience does not make it necessarily welcome to landlords. And so every three years, we usually have to find a new place and a new lease because we are so loud. But that's what makes us awesome, in that we take up space and you literally feel the vibrations in your ribs. Uh, so we're looking to have a permanent home at an empty warehouse on the corner, uh, on Front Avenue there. And so, um, our hope is not only can we bring this dynamic ancient art form to the neighborhood, but that we could also provide a multipurpose neighborhood event space as well. Um, in North End, there is not a lot of arts nonprofits. I think maybe one, uh, I think. And I think that there is such a rich, diverse immigrant population, and there's so much happening there that we would love to create a space that's safe for all, that invites everybody, that is about building up community through this very healing and exciting art form. Um, our organization's been around for almost, in different forms, almost three decades now, and we have become a cultural gem here in Minnesota, in that we are internationally known, and we have a film that's been around, um, the globe and broadcast nationally on PBS. And we perform regularly. We have classes. We go into schools. We work with youth. We work with elderly. Uh, we are all about bringing the healing and empowering, um, joy of drumming to Minnesota and St. Paul.
Thank you so much, Ms. Weir. I have had the opportunity to hear you in action multiple times, and it is indeed rib-shaking. So thank you for taking the time to speak with us today.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it back to Vice President Kim for.
Perfect. Thank you so much for being here. Um, I really appreciate, uh, so I will move a version three, um, and I have just some very brief comments. Um, similar to my colleagues at the table, Jennifer Weir and Taiko Arts Midwest are breaking gender barriers in their art form. So traditionally, Taiko is a male-dominated art. It is for all the reasons, right? And so even within Jennifer and the work that they're doing, and their organization, and their troupe, um, they too are sort of breaking gender barriers. Um, and so I am elated to support them as they seek a permanent home, and it is on the border that I share with Councilmember Bowie, right on Front Avenue. Um, I'm very excited to see this, both this art and this organization grow. Um, I think now more than ever, as we think about music and our arts, it is going to be one of our greatest forms of resistance. So I'm very excited to support this resolution. And then with that, I'll move a version three.
Thanks, Vice President Kim. Uh, any further discussion of the motion, Ms. Bowie?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to echo the sentiments. Um, thank you for removing this off the agenda and getting, giving council members the, the chance to also, um, support and highlight and champion this. I actually had the first, um, time to actually visit the site, um, during, uh, the state representative and the senator's bonding tour last year. Um, and it was very loud, and it was rib-shaking, and I enjoyed it. Um, and it's right in the heart of the, the neighborhood in North End. Um, I'm, you know, really familiar with this, this area, but thank you again for just highlighting it. And I do see just the changes here on the version three, where it's more clean-cut, particularly around promoting state funding, um, for this organization. So thank you for that.
Any further discussion of the motion? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Vice President Kim for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted as amended. Item seventeen is Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen thirty-four, declaring October Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
This is a very special resolution. It's always a very special meeting every year, um, when we, when we honor and recognize this important moment in this month. I want to welcome Shelley Klein, um, from the St. Paul Domestic Violence Intervention Project, her staff, her guests, to join us up at the front. I would never want to read a resolution as the first part of this process because Shelley speaks so beautifully about the work, and I think that that should lead. So, welcome. Make sure you stand in between the two gold columns so all five live cameras can get you at once. No pressure. No pressure. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Council President, members of the council. Sorry, my voice is a bit rough. My name is Shelley Klein, and I'm the director of the St. Paul Intervention Project SPIT, and I'm standing here today with my amazing coworkers, a sample of them, who do this work 24/7, in partnership with so many other wonderful, um, domestic violence shelters and programs throughout our community. Each year, our agency serves over 6,000 victims of domestic abuse. We reach out in the middle of the night. We work very closely with our city partners so we can make sure that we can go directly to the victims in the times that they're experiencing some of the worst moments in their lives. Working with the victim participants in our agency, these, they're warriors, and they're children is an, is an amazing gift for us to do. We see many people survive domestic violence, go through all sorts of transitions, and none of this would be, um, I say this every year, but we wouldn't be capable of doing this without your support and the help of the council. You're there 24/7 for us. You support this agency. You support victims, and it means everything to us. What we do, and we've heard this from victims, and we've seen this in the statistics, together, you save lives with us, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Shelley. Um, did, did anyone else from the organization want to speak or introduce themselves? Don't want to put anyone on the spot? No worries. Uh, but before we read the resolution and officially take a vote, I, I just want to look to my colleagues to see if anyone has, has any comments. Um, well, we'll go first to Ms. Johnson, then to Ms. Yang.
It's so funny because when you ask it, I think everyone's just like, who's going to go first? And then they're like, me? Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you, uh, both to Shelley and to your staff to, for being here today. Uh, every year, I think it's really important that we, you know, not only give awareness to it this month, but also just year-round. And so I, I appreciate the fact that, um, you're bringing members of your team who do this work day-to-day, and how important and vital it is. And, you know, we saw some of the worst of the worst during the pandemic at a time when it was really exacerbated, but it's not, it hasn't gotten, it hasn't, domestic violence hasn't completely gotten, gone away since. Um, you know, this is one of those things that truly it takes heart and it takes dedication from members of your team like yourselves, who say that we're going to dedicate time towards our survivors and ensuring that folks have a, a space to go, a place to be, and people to talk to about something that some, so often we, you know, especially in, as a woman and as women, it's can, can sometimes be hard, but also, uh, you know, it impacts a lot of people, more people than we know, probably people in this room and folks that, you know, have had to really, um, dive in and, and seek support in any way that they can. So it's an issue that we hold dear to our heart, something that I look forward to every year. I appreciate seeing all of the different, um, government bodies in our city recognizing this, this important month, and just thank you for coming back in and ensuring that we were able to do that as well.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Yang?
Thanks, Council President. I'd like to echo everything that Councilmember Johnson mentioned. I also want to say thank you for your work during the hockey fundraisers. I've, that's posted every year. I've, I, I got a chance to connect with a couple of staff members, and I really appreciate how invested SPIT is in making sure that your staff are reflective of the victims who you are supporting. It's, um, really special, um, work that you all are doing, and you pour your heart and passion into it, and we can see it. I really appreciate our office just being able to continue sending referrals your way, victims of domestic violence who are reaching out to our office. And so, again, thank you for the lifesaving work that you do.
Thanks, Ms. Yang. I think I saw Ms. Joest, Ms. Coleman, and Ms. Bowie.
Thank you, Council President. Well, thank you, um, thank you, Shelley, so much to you and all your staff for being here. We're really grateful for, um, for our partnership with you. And I also just wanted to lift up the, the Ramsey County and St. Paul Hockey fundraiser that we do every year. It's one of my favorite events. I look forward to, and it was an event that was, uh, very important to my predecessor, Councilmember Tolbert, as well. And so I just want to thank you all again for being here and for, for everything that you, that you do. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms. Joest. Ms. Coleman?
Thank you. I, I will be the fourth, I think, to echo what all of my colleagues have, have said, but I just want to thank you all so much for being here, and thank you for the lifesaving work that you do. And it's so, the, the fact that we have to have a Domestic Violence Awareness Month is, is so heavy and outweighs so heavily on all of us. And, you know, as the council, we spend so much time talking about both safety and the importance of home and the importance of housing, and to know that there are members of our community and folks throughout the state and across the country who aren't safe in their own homes and who don't have that feeling of security that we all rely on is, is just horrifying. And I'm so grateful that there are folks who are doing this work every day and, and making sure that we are saving lives. So I'm so grateful, um, and so grateful that we're able to be here with you all today.
Thanks, Ms. Coleman. Ms. Bowie?
Thank you, Council President. So I'll be the fifth, um, to also echo my strong support on Shelley and also your staff. Uh, you know, it was, uh, and also, um, Council President Naker for sponsoring this resolution and, and giving us the time to really talk about this really tough and critical reality that, uh, many of our communities, um, have faced, whether across gender, sex, religion, socioeconomic, um, income. Uh, you know, we know someone, you know, um, who have experienced violence. And I also just want to say I appreciate how, you know, your framing of transforming victims into survivors and having a space for people, um, to not only be survivors, but also be advocates and be practitioners and helping people through their journey, um, of, 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 you know, their exercising their human rights, you know, making sure that they're safe. Um, this, uh, this work is, is very deeply connected to a lot that, um, I do through my office. Um, just a few days ago, we had the opportunity to hear from the Office of Missing and Murdered Black Women and Girls and their research partner, Research and Action, where they did a, a survey. Um, so we're seeing this, this work grow. We're seeing more spaces for people to speak their truth. Um, and also, um, as policymakers, listen, um, to organizations like yourself and, um, and other community organizations around what recommendations, what should we be doing differently, what are some policies or some services, um, that we should be investing in to make sure that people have a safe place to be. So thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bowie. Any other comments? Um, very hard to follow that. I will just say, uh, my own personal thanks. Um, Shelley, I think I've, this is my 10th year now seeing you come and speak to us, and, and that's, that's just my 10th year. I know you have had many more years, and those are just, those are the days that you come and speak to the council, and the other 364 days, you and your staff are doing this important work. And I'm just so, um, so grateful that you're here. If we didn't have the St. Paul Domestic Violence Intervention Project, we would be desperately trying to create it. And we're so fortunate to have a model like this. So thank you so much for everything that you do. Um, I think we should pass a resolution now, so I'm going to come up and read just the last paragraph of it. Maybe should have unwrapped the box first. Whereas the City Council of St. Paul, Minnesota recognizes that living free from domestic violence is a fundamental human right, and whereas we as a community from our first responders, community-based domestic violence programs, justice system workers, medical providers, educators, government systems, faith communities, businesses, and community leaders and members pay tribute to the lives and the courage of the victims whose lives we value and will continue to serve in the life-changing impact we have found in working together to end domestic violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Paul City Council declares October 2025 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of St. Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted.
Come on up, and let's take a picture. Take a motion from Ms. Coleman to suspend the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The rules are suspended. Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen twenty, approving ordinance permit number ending in 101 for roadway and sidewalk infrastructure installed by the St. Paul Port Authority on the Heights Project Site.
Uh, so there are actually six suspension items in front of us today, all for the same reason and all for the same project. Um, I'm going to invite Mr. Reister from Planning and Economic Development to come on up and just give us a little bit more context as to the project and the reason for the suspension items. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Council President Naker and council members. Um, the Habitat for Humanity Development at the Heights is set to receive its first residence as early as next week. For this to happen, adjacent infrastructure needs to be approved, things like sewers, roadways, sidewalks, uh, lighting, striping, and those sorts of things need to be accepted. Um, and, and this body is the entity that accepts those. Those are what's called ordinance permits. We intended to get six such ordinance permits on the, uh, agenda for today via, uh, Legisstar, and we entered those into Legisstar. They just simply did not get the approvals over a somewhat busy vacation week, um, that we were looking for. So they did not make it today. But if you would be willing to consider putting them on the agenda, and if they were approved, the infrastructure adjacent to the development could be approved in time for those first residents to move in.
Thanks so much for the update and that we are working hard to keep suspension items off of the agenda. Uh, I think all of us desperately value affordable housing in our city and don't want to keep anybody from being able to move into their homes. So this is as worthy an item as I've ever seen to be brought under suspension. So thank you, um, for the explanation. Um, any discussion? I'll take a, a motion from Ms. Yang to approve. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. Yang?
Thanks, Council President. I just wanted to make a quick comment. This is a huge milestone for the Heights. I want to give a shout out to, uh, Twin Cities Habitat for all of their work on constructing homes, um, at the site, and also our, our incredible staff, who are really getting their process going for all of this. So I am supportive of all of the items that we are bringing under suspension today.
Thanks, Ms. Yang. Any further discussion? All right, the motion, uh, from Ms. Yang is to approve the items. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted.
Take a motion from Ms. Yang to suspend the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. Rules are suspended. Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen twenty-one, approving ordinance permit number ending in numbers one oh two for roadway and sidewalk infrastructure installed by the St. Paul Port Authority on the Heights Project Site.
Take a motion from Ms. Yang for approval. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted.
Take a motion from Ms. Yang to suspend the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The, the rules are suspended. Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen twenty-two, approving ordinance permit number ending in three oh one for roadway, traffic, lighting, infrastructure installed on the Heights Project Site.
Take a motion from Ms. Yang for approval. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted.
Motion from Ms. Yang to suspend the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The rules are suspended. Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen twenty-three, approving ordinance permit number ending in three oh two for roadway, traffic, lighting, infrastructure installed on the Heights Project Site.
Motion for approval from Ms. Yang. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted.
Motion from Ms. Yang to suspend the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The rules are suspended. Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen twenty-four, approving ordinance permit number ending in three oh three for roadway traffic, signing, and striping infrastructure installed on the Heights Project Site.
Motion for approval from Ms. Yang. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The rules, uh, the resolution is adopted.
Motion from Ms. Yang to suspend the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The rules are suspended. Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen twenty-five, approving ordinance permit number ending in four oh one for storm sewer infrastructure installed by the St. Paul Port Authority on the Heights Project Site.
Motion from Ms. Yang to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The rules, the resolution is adopted. Um, final adoption is, um, of ordinance number, um, twenty-five dash fifty-eight, considering the application of the Housing Redevelopment Authority to rezone property at 1059 Maryland Avenue, from B2 Community Business to T2 Traditional Neighborhood and amending Chapter sixty of the Legislative Code pertaining to, pertaining to the zoning map.
So for all who are joining us today, and all who are the millions who are watching at home, our ordinances get three readings. The first reading, we have a staff report to explain what the item is. The second reading is the next week. Usually, we have a public hearing at that point to hear comments from the public. And then the last week, the third reading is the final adoption. So we go in reverse order, sort of. Um, you'll see this item is for final adoption. That means it's already been presented to us at least twice for a first reading and a public hearing. Um, so there's already been context shared about this item, and I would look to Ms. Yang for a motion, any comments?
Thanks, Council President. I am supportive of this rezoning request, and I also want to add additional information that this is a city property. We've already gotten several inquiries from entrepreneurs about. So I'm, I've expressed to HRA that I'd like for us to get it up for sale as soon as possible, that we can get more development done in the area. So I, I hope this will be coming before us sometime next year. If not, then earlier is even better. So I move approval of it.
Sounds great, and I would support the urgency of getting this out on the market as well. So motion for approval from Ms. Yang. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The ordinance is adopted. Item nineteen is first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash sixty-three, amending Legislative Code, Chapter two twenty, to allow for garbage cart sharing at properties within two or more dwelling units beginning January first, 2026.
And since this is a first reading of an ordinance, we will have a staff report. I believe Sarah Haas from Public Works is here to tell us more. Come on up.
I'm bringing Lydia with me since she has the details.
And Lydia.
Okay, so, um, this ordinance will allow for multi-unit cart sharing. So our current ordinance requires that each unit have a cart. Uh, the simple change to this is it'll be per lot a cart. So any, um, property with two to four units will be allowed to determine how many carts that they need for that lot. Um, this will go into effect January one if it's approved, with applications opening on December first. Uh, we do not intend to have any, uh, application fee for this, uh, service. Um, there will be some conditions, um, that would revoke the privilege if, if it's abused. So the first, um, time that there's overflowing chat trash, we would tag the cart, let the resident know, um, that they cannot have excess bags. They can be set aside for an additional $4. If that happens again within a two-month, uh, period from the first overflow, we'll notify the residents, uh, by mail, saying that we'll deliver a medium-sized cart if there's a third offense. The third offense is delivering that cart to them and, uh, initiating the fees. And then if it happens again, um, within that two-month period, we would, uh, remove the cart sharing and deliver carts for all, all units. Any questions? I think that's kind of in a nutshell.
It's a very well-named ordinance. Thank you. Uh, questions or questions, I guess, first? Um, Ms. Johnson?
I just, uh, wanted to know, uh, one I'm excited to see that we're taking this on is something that actually we, it's come up a few times in my office hours. I'm thinking of a couple constituents right now that I can let know this is, uh, in the works of coming up. Uh, how will this, if it's in, um, going through the readings and it gets approved, how will the, the sharing option be communicated?
Um, Council President, Councilmember Johnson, we'll communicate that, um, in a number of ways. We have a newsletter now that goes in our garbage bill, so we've already gone to print for the next one, but the first quarter bill will be in. Um, I can assure you that it's well, um, publicized on social media right now. Um, and it'll be posted on our city website and, uh, one week, uh, before the public hearing with all of the details and the application, what the process will look like.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. Other questions? All right, uh, seeing none. Thanks so much, Sarah and Lydia. Um, and I will, we're going to take a motion on this one to lay it over to November 12th rather than November 5th. As you may have heard, November 5th is a bit of a busy day here at council, and so we're going to take, uh, try to balance the workload just a little bit. So I'll take a motion from Ms. Joest to lay this over to November 12th for the public hearing. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The ordinance is laid over to November 12th for second reading, public hearing. Item twenty is first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash sixty-five, creating Chapter two twenty-five A of the Legislative Code titled Firearms Regulations to Establish Regulations for Assault Weapons, Binary Triggers, Ghost Guns, and Signage.
And I believe we have a staff report from Burn House and, oh, our mayor, Melvin Carter. You can sign in afterwards, mayor, if you like. Make sure you state your name and address for the record.
Council President Naker, members of the city council, my name is Melvin Carter, and I live at fifteen West Kellogg Boulevard here in St. Paul. Um, I'm honored to be here, and I want to say thank you for all of your leadership as we, as a city, lead in a state on gun violence. Uh, it is no secret to any of us that we lost two children, two Minnesota children, uh, just several weeks ago to gun violence, as they sat in there and have challenged people to tell me how many layers of unacceptable this, this happens. Uh, this includes, when I say that we had young children who were in a school, who were in a church, they were praying, and they had bullets, a hundred rounds in one minute, rained down on them through a stained glass window faster than they could, uh, run, or fight, or flee, uh, or, or, or hide, or, or even pray. Um, and we're at a moment where we have to do something. Uh, council members, I often share with folks that city government is where problems go when they prove too difficult for our federal government or in our state government to address, and this is one of those. Um, we all know what bold action our Congress is likely to take, and we all know what bold action, um, this legislature in Minnesota is likely to take as a result of this crisis. And we all know that this crisis, we wish that this crisis was a isolated event, and that there was some reason to believe that this won't continue to happen in our country and in our state unless we do take some bold action. Um, if nothing else is going to change, then we have to change something. I was reminding some folks earlier today that there was a time not too long ago when we were all used to walking into a restaurant and seeing cigarette smoke all around us. And folks at the Capitol told us that that was just a fact of life. And the city of St. Paul, our, our predecessors in this room took action, and the city of Minneapolis and cities started moving on that. And now the norm that we're used to is a fundamentally different thing, not that far later. There's plenty of precedent for cities taking action and moving. And it's particularly as we do these things alongside the 15 other cities who have said that they're going to do these with us, following St. Paul's lead, I believe that we can lead a major difference in our community and in our state for our children to be used to a different environment, to be used to a different future than we all had to. all had to grow up sadly used to. We are proposing for simple proposals, and Bryn is here who will help to walk us through the specifics of those things. But I would suggest that these are proposals that while much has been said about them being preempted by state law from us being able to enforce them right now, one of the things that we're fighting for is the lifting of that preemption. And what I've said to each and every one of you is, if and when we are successful in getting that preemption to lift, I believe, as I know that you do, that that won't be time for us to start thinking about maybe drafting and having some public hearings about moving our way towards an ordinance. That'll be time for a St. Paul ordinance to take effect immediately. We've had that conversation. And let me tell you, as I've had this conversation over the last month with residents of our city and residents of our state, we find that the four requirements that we're putting forward here, saying you cannot carry an assault weapon down the main street in our community, you cannot bring an assault weapon into a library or a center sensitive public space, that there's no place in our city for those little devices that turn regular handguns into weapons of mass destruction. And oh, by the way, every single firearm has to have a serial number. Most folks, the vast majority of folks, I think, see the, receive those things as not some grandiose approach to guns, but really the bare minimum of what we ought to be doing as a civilized community on to prevent gun violence. We've worked together to prevent gun violence, to leverage every single lever that we can imagine to prevent gun violence in our community. And it's why we've seen gun violence down seventy percent in our community. We've all told our constituents that we will take every action that we can, and this is consistent with that promise. So thank you for your work on this. Thank you for leading. I look forward to standing, continuing to stand alongside every single one of you as St. Paul leads the way. Thank you very much. And with that, I will turn it over to Director House.
Thank you, mayor. Welcome up, Ms. House.
Hello, council, council president, council members. Thanks for having me. I'm Bryn House, Intergovernmental Relations Director for the City of St. Paul. I live in Bloomington. Thanks for having me today. I'll go through our presentation. A lot of these slides will look familiar, similar to the slides I showed last week at the Public Safety Committee hearing. So just briefly, our timeline for this ordinance process, your timeline for this ordinance process, today, first reading and staff report. On November fifth, we plan second reading and public hearing. I just want to flag for you all a heads up that I just figured out this afternoon, I'm gonna have to bring a clarifying amendment to Council President. There is just one inconsistency in the language that we need to fix. So we'll have it before the public hearing on the fifth.
Just as long as it isn't under suspension.
There will not be a suspension. And then November twelfth will be third reading and final passage. And this is a slide we went through last week, but by way of background, state law preempts local governments in Minnesota from passing any restrictions on firearms as a response to the inaction at the state level. As the mayor, I'm not gonna repeat everything he just said, but this is the City of St. Paul's response. And the ordinance that we are bringing forward today is contingent upon a couple of things happening. I will get to that in a later slide, but we are aware of the preemption law, and this ordinance would not be enforced until those laws are either repealed or other substantially similar laws are passed that would allow us to enforce this ordinance. Okay, and then an additional background point. In 2023, the St. Paul City Council unanimously adopted a safe storage ordinance in St. Paul. It's our, kind of, like, we are, this ordinance builds upon that work of keeping St. Paul residents safe. So while we are requiring gun owners to safely store their firearms, now we will also be taking another important step to protect residents, especially children, from gun violence. So this ordinance, as mentioned previously, will ban public possession of assault weapons within city limits, ban large-capacity magazines and binary triggers, require all firearms to have a serial number, prohibiting ghost guns, restrict firearms in sensitive public city-owned leased and controlled spaces, ensure clear signage to promote compliance with firearms, firearm bans in public buildings, and establish penalties to the extent that we are, as a municipality, allowed to establish penalties for the ordinance, for any violations. There are exemptions for each section. Exemptions common in each section are active-duty law enforcement and military personnel, licensed firearms, curators, transport, legal transport through the city, so locked, stored properly, not loaded, and then disposal or transfer to authorized agencies. As I mentioned last week, we have a broad coalition across the state who are also looking at passing a similar, same or similar ordinances in their own jurisdictions. So here's a list of those partner cities as well as partner organizations who are helping to promote gun violence prevention. So prohibited weapons and devices. So this ordinance bans the public possession of assault weapons as defined in Minnesota law. So assault weapons is defined in the ordinance to match the definition of assault weapon in Minnesota state law. So there is a very, we say assault weapons, understand it can mean several different things. Our ordinance clearly defines assault weapon to mean the same thing that assault weapon means in, under Minnesota state law. So it does have a clear, like, it does mean a very specific type of weapon. Large-capacity magazines, the ordinance is written to ban large-capacity magazines that hold twenty or more rounds of ammunition, and then binary triggers, which are devices that you can purchase separately from your firearm, attach it to your firearm, and then a pull of the trigger would, like, discharge more than one bullet. We also are, through this ordinance, prohibiting ghost guns. Ghost guns are guns that do not have a serial number and were not produced before nineteen sixty-eight, which is my understanding is that when, that is when federal serialization for guns became a thing for produced guns. But ghost guns are now guns that can be assembled from, like, a kit that you buy online, and then you assemble the guns, or a firearm. So they're not sold as, it's not regulated. It's like a loophole to get through firearms regulations to sell this kit, because they're not selling you a gun, they're just selling you some pieces. And if they happen to, you know, come into the shape of a gun, that's not the intention. Those guns would not be legal in St. Paul. You can also, I guess, 3D-print gun parts, and then you just buy, like, the, I don't, I'm not a gun expert here, but you can, like, purchase the actual pieces that need to be metal, and then 3D-print the rest of the pieces, and then assemble your own gun, which is not traceable, because it would not have a serial number, because it would not have been purchased through a federally licensed firearms dealer. And then any frame or receiver without a serial number that's marketed, so the pieces that you would need to have with your 3D-printed part would also not be legal. Again, as I mentioned, this does not include firearms manufactured prior to nineteen sixty-eight, antique guns, or firearms rendered as permanently inoperable. There is a specific meaning for permanent, like, definition of permanently inoperable that is, I think, in state law, but it is very, like, specific as, you can't just say, my gun doesn't work. It has to meet specific And then another piece, guns prohibited in sensitive spaces. We're defining sensitive spaces in this ordinance to be very specific, so we know exactly what they mean. I have the definition up here, but it is any city-owned lease or controlled building or property that is for these purposes. I'm not gonna read the whole definition, because you all can read, but just to be very clear about exactly which types of publicly owned and operated facilities we are talking about. There are exceptions for people who can have guns in those sensitive places, including city personnel in the course of their official duties. So in addition to law enforcement, there are other city workers who use firearms as their official duties. The zookeepers are a good example of that. Persons who are otherwise expressly authorized by state law to have firearms, and then situations where a possession of a firearm is necessary to render medical aid to somebody, as long as you notify either the facility staff or law enforcement as soon as practicable. There's a signage requirement in this ordinance, also requiring the city to post clear signage in all sensitive places, at every entrance to the sensitive place, and then as well inside the sensitive place at entrances to gymnasiums, service desks, and other, like, active entry points. So making sure that we are being very clear with anyone who's visiting a sensitive place, that it is a sensitive place. We're not trying to trick anybody into carrying a gun into a place that they can't have it. We want to make sure everybody's very clear. These are the places you cannot have a gun. There will be plenty of signs. The ordinance outlines the, like, exactly what the sign needs to say, which I have here. The City of St. Paul bans firearms on these premises. The font and sign size is all outlined in the ordinance to be very specific and clear and consistent, so everybody, you know, coming into any city-owned sensitive space will know that guns are not prohibited in that space. And then, as I mentioned at the start of the staff report, contingency and enforcement. So this ordinance is contingent upon one of two things or both things happening, which is the repeal of the state preemption law, Minnesota statutes four seventy-one point six three three, or and the passage of any Minnesota law that's substantially similar to any part of the ordinance, or that specifically authorizes cities or local governments to enact local restrictions that are similar, substantially similar to the ordinance. The ordinance will be enforced by St. Paul police only after becoming effective, so contingent upon these two events taking place. And then any violations in the ordinance would be subject to a misdemeanor. That's the highest level of crime that we're able to prosecute as a city, but only once. Again, it is contingent on these things happening, so we would not be prosecuting or holding anyone subject to a misdemeanor until the contingent events happen. All right, that's the end. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. House, for that informative presentation. We will have lots of opportunities for discussion, including our public hearing next week or two weeks from now, and our final adoption. But I am looking to my colleagues to see if there are questions from Ms. House now, or any comments as well. Let's start with questions. I do have one question. This, I know this ordinance is not preempted by state law because it doesn't take effect until state law changes. Is that true for the signage about sensitive places as well, that that too cannot take effect until state law changes, or are there other parts of this ordinance that can take effect earlier?
That, I, let me, I will need to double-check with the city attorney and get back to you on that, to just to make sure that my answer is correct. I don't want to say something that's not, like, correct on that, because it is pretty, I think, technical.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sorry.
I know there's been a lot, no, a lot of work and a lot of, the devil's always in the details, and I appreciate the work that's gone into this. Okay, doesn't look like there are any questions. Thank you so much, Ms. House, and I'll look to my colleagues if there are comments at this time. There also aren't any comments at this time. Okay, so this matter will be coming before us again November fifth for public hearing?
Yes, second reading on public hearing on November fifth. Item twenty-one is a public hearing of ordinance twenty-five dash sixty-one, amending Chapter seventy-four of the Legislative Code by enacting a new section designating the Theodore Hambury Company Heritage Preservation District as a heritage preservation site.
This brings us to the public hearing section of our agenda. So for all the remaining items that are under the public hearing banner, when we call your item, if you are here to testify on that item, please come on up to the microphones, unless there's a staff report first, in which case we will tell you. Come on up, stand between the two microphones. You don't need to adjust them. They will pick you up just fine where they are. Start with your name and where you're coming from, and then you will have two minutes to give testimony, and two minutes goes by pretty fast. So there's also the, always the opportunity to email us, call in and give testimony in other ways, and we do have in front of us the record of anything that's been submitted in advance as well. So with that, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item, which is item twenty-one? Come on up. Welcome.
Good afternoon, and thank you, council, for having me. My name is Michelle Taylor. I live in, I live in the shadow of the Hambury, and I'm here because I strongly agree with the historic preservation. The, this is a case where historic preservation is needed for progress. We all know that. And the city hasn't always been aware or recognized that in the past. We know that. And I think that the east side of St. Paul particularly has been underserved in in many respects, and I think this will be a great economic boost and just a boost for our image all around. The, the site, the Hamb site, has been drawing sightseers for over a hundred years. It's, you know, it's a beautiful, due to the nature of how breweries are built, they're, they're, it's a five-story vertical structure and, you know, with gables and baroque domes and arched windows and this beautiful, striking red and white stone. It's, it's really sad. I have many memories of the brewery myself, having lived, raised my children right in the same block almost, and it's just been part of my life for a long time. I even rode to work with my father, who was a truck driver, and remember backing up to the dock and looking up at the building and just being in awe of the structure itself. So, let me see. I work in the hospitality business and in the area, and three-fourths of my guests that come are there for the history, because many people say to me, well, why do they come there to, you know, the east side? And they're very interested in the history of the area, and of course, Hamb is at the center of all of that history. We appreciate what the businesses have brought to the brewery, but isn't it ironic that the businesses that are there base a lot, most of their appeal on the historic aspect of the structure?
And that is, that is the end of your time, so I'm gonna need you to wrap up.
Pardon me?
That is the end of your time, so I need you to wrap up.
Oh, that did go fast, like you said. Well, I just wanted to say thank you, and, you know, important here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
I forgot to mention this earlier, but please sign in when you're done on one of the two sign-in sheets. Thank you very much. Welcome up.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ashley Bisner, address thirteen thirty-five Pierce Butler Route in St. Paul. President Naker and St. Paul City Council members, I just said my name is Ashley Bisner, Vice President of JP Bang, Vice President of Development at JP Bang. Thank you for considering the designation of the Theodore Hamb Brewing Company District as a heritage preservation site. As a designated tentative developer of this site since 2023, we remain committed to delivering a vibrant, community-oriented development that will bring the neighborhood and, that will benefit the neighborhood and the city. We know that renovating and restoring historic buildings like these, which have been vacant and in decline since nineteen ninety-seven, is much more expensive than building new construction, and tax credits are a tool intended to bridge this gap. Creating a local historic district will unlock the necessary historic tax credits to, and ensure the history here is preserved. This designation is a crucial step in honoring St. Paul's rich, rich past while building for its future. Our plan to renovate the historic brewery buildings into artist-style lofts in a commercial marketplace is exactly the kind of adaptive reuse that preserves our heritage. It's a smart way to ensure these iconic structures remains a vibrant part of the city's fabric. JP Bang has shown great faith by listening to the community and has made accommodations that include more parking and a willingness to work with existing businesses and neighbors. I encourage the council to proceed with the historic designation, unlocking access to historic tax credits that will bring life, that will bring to life an authentic and community-focused revitalization. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Make sure to sign in. Is there anyone else here to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Johnson to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed.
Just looking to see if there are any comments. Otherwise, this item will be laid over, this item will be laid over till November fifth.
Yes. Item twenty-two is Resolution Public Hearing twenty-five dash two twenty-four, amending the financing and spending plans in the 2022 capital maintenance budget in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to reflect canceled HRA transfer.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Bowie to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item twenty-three is Resolution Public Hearing twenty-five dash two twenty-eight, amending the capital improvement budget to the 2025 DSI annual services building project.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Jones to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item twenty-four is Resolution Public Hearing twenty-five dash two thirty-four, accepting grant funds, authorizing execution of a grant agreement, and amending the operating budget with respect to the city's sponsorship of a Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Act pre-development grant program for the benefit of a project at five seventy-six Lexington Parkway North, the Lexington Deluxe.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Bowie to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item twenty-five is Resolution Public Hearing twenty-five dash two twenty-five, authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept Parks and Trails legacy funds, enter into grant agreements, which include indemnification clause, and amend the financing and spending plan in the amount of two million five hundred ninety-six thousand and thirty-nine dollars.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Vice President Kim to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item 26 is Resolution Public Hearing 25-226, authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Recreation Grant Program Funds and to amend the financing and spending plan in the amount of $350,000 for a new city park at the Heights.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Yang to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item 27 is Resolution Public Hearing 25-235, authorizing the Department of Public Works Street Maintenance Division to spend funds from an awarded grant for a workplace wellness micro grant physical activity station of $700 from the St. Paul Area Chamber, with the funding coming from the statewide health improvement partnership through St. Paul Ramsey County Public Health.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Johnson to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item 28 is Resolution Public Hearing 25-238, authorizing the Department of Public Works to spend funds from a grant awarded by the Ramsey-Washington Metro Watershed District for the enhanced street sweeping stewardship grant to perform additional street sweeping within the Ramsey-Washington Metro Watershed District boundaries.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Coleman to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item 29 is Resolution Public Hearing 25-219, final order to consider the reconstruction of University Avenue between I-35E and Lafayette Road and acquisition of necessary property rights.
And before we hold this public hearing, we are honored to have a brief staff report from Mr. Bruce Engelbrecht of OFS Real Estate, welcome up.
Thank you, Council President, council members, and I'm honored to deliver the staff report. Item 29 is a final order resolution for the reconstruction of University Avenue between I-35E and Lafayette Road. The key provision in the resolution is to authorize the city to acquire permanent right-of-way easements, permanent sidewalk drainage and utility easements, and temporary construction easements from the five properties located along the south side of the street. That authorization includes acquiring the easements through direct purchase, which involves appraisals, offers, negotiations, and direct settlement on compensation with the owners. The city has been actively pursuing this approach over the past few months. The resolution also authorizes the city to exercise its powers of eminent domain or condemnation if necessary. That would include filing papers in district court to ensure we could acquire the property rights by early next year so the project can be bid and construction can start in the spring. Fortunately, we've already reached agreement with all five owners and are just waiting on them, on a few of them, to sign the easement paperwork. We don't anticipate any issues, so condemnation will most likely not be needed. This is only a backup measure in case the property owners don't sign in a timely manner. Thanks, and if you have any questions about the project, I think Steve Dodge is here from the, from the street design.
I love that. If you have any questions, Steve will answer them.
Ask him.
Thanks so much, Mr. Engelbrecht, really appreciate the additional information. Any questions for Mr. Engelbrecht? Doesn't look like it, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will make the motion to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item 30 is Resolution Public Hearing 25-229, considering the application of Hunter Bradford Degree of Honor for an exception to the general hours of skyway operations for pedestrian skyway bridges, which would close a door within the walkway of pedestrian skyway bridge number 33, a bridge that is between the Degree of Honor building and the Crest House Apartments building.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Come on up, welcome. And thank you for your patience, last but not least.
Two minutes. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jamaica Young and I'm here to propose a bold but practical concept for reimagining downtown St. Paul after dark, indoor and all year round. It's called Sky Corridor Pilot, an indoor nightlife corridor that leverages what we already have, our skyway system, our creative economy and our people, all situated along the historically and prominent Miss Mississippi River. After 5:00 PM, large parts of our skyways and city go quiet and that's a missed opportunity economically, socially and in terms of safety. We lose foot traffic, businesses miss sales and yet downtown hosts nearly 7,800 residents. Nearly 56% of those have higher education degrees. And we have major employers in the skyway system like Wells Fargo, US Bank and the hospitality around Rice Park that sends thousands of people through the area daily and we're not capturing that energy after work like we could. The proposal is simple. Let's activate two to four blocks of the skyway from Treasure Island Center to Wells Fargo Place and turn it into a vibrant indoor corridor. We'll feature pop-up food and retail carts and storefronts and jazz-influenced music stages, mini second-line parades and lighting and signage, all cross-promoting existing destinations like the Minnesota Children's Museum, Triabank and surrounding theater and music venues. It evokes a French Quarter-style atmosphere built for our winters and the pilot would run Thursday through Saturday nights from 4:00 PM to midnight for 90 days. It's low risk and high return. Minnesota already, we have, oh, I'm so sorry, I'm nervous. This is how, this is low capital. The infrastructure we have already exists, we're just layering in the experience. Minnesota has world-class food, art and music, so let's bring those together indoors. It works in winter, it's inclusive and safe and more people means natural surveillance and community pride. My father lives in the Kellogg Square Building and as he ages, this kind of walkable, warm, active environment means a lot to him and others within his community.
And I, I'm going to have to ask you to stop there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please make sure to sign in.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. And then I just want to say one thing, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you so much for coming down to testify. The item we were considering was tangentially related to skyway activation, but not specifically about it. So I would love to follow up with you on this idea that you have, which sounds very interesting, but it's not really germane to this item specifically in terms of our vote today. So I look forward to following up with you and I'll make sure to find your sign-in email and send you an email. So thank you for taking the time to come down.
Thank you.
And I would move approval of this item, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Item 31 is RLHTA 25-115, ratifying the appealed special tax assessment for property at 686 Edmund Avenue.
Ms. Mormon?
Council President, there, there is no one here to testify on this. I'm asking for a layover to November 12th. This is an assessment for vacant building fee from October of 2024 through October of '25 and I will be recommending approval of the assessment. It's still not out of the vacant building program, but we want to make sure that the owner has noticed that that's where the recommendation landed.
So the motion, the recommendation would be for layover till November 12th?
Lay the matter over to November 12th, please.
Ms. Bowie, for a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve legislative hearing officer's recommendation to layover till November 12th. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is laid over to November 12th. Legislative hearing consent agenda items 32 through 44 are before you for your consideration.
Ms. Mormon?
I'm not aware of anyone else to testify on a hearing item.
Okay, seeing none, we will call for a public hearing on all of the items. If you are here for a public hearing on any of the items 32 through 44, this is your public hearing, come on up. Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Coleman to approve all of the, close the public hearing and approve all of the items with the recommendations and amendments from the legislative hearing officer. Someday I will get that consistent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the consent agenda is adopted as amended.
That brings us to the end of our agenda and one of our favorite times of the day. Good news from around the, whoa, council vice president is ready.
I am ready.
Go ahead.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, thank you. So in response to the HSI raids that happened in Ward 5, we directed constituents and honestly neighbors across the city to come attend a constitutional observer training. I hosted it with my, with my state rep, we had over 80 people attend. We'll continue to offer these trainings. The next one that we'll offer up is Know Your Rights. So I'm just previewing that to folks that will be offering a training probably sometime in the middle of November, so keep, stay posted. But I think more than ever, just equipping residents with knowledge and skills is really important as we just think about the ways that we can as an individual help keep our neighbors safe. But just the good news is that we had over 80 participants and we, we didn't have to turn any way, but we, we filled the room and that felt, I think, really, really good considering the moment we're in.
Thanks for your leadership on that, Vice President, it's so needed. Other good news around the table, Ms. Yang?
Thank you, there's a Halloween walkthrough happening tomorrow at Hazel Park Rec Center. That's Thursday, October 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. There, it's a free event for ages 3 through 12. There will be a Halloween, Halloween display room. You can grab a treat from community partners and socialize with neighbors.
Sounds great. Other good news, Ms. Johnson?
Our board just wants to take the time to wish our legislative aide a happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday. Happy birthday, Melanie.
I only get to do it once a year, so I wanted to make sure that she feels appreciated and she happens to be here today. So just wanted to say happy birthday to Melanie Johnson, our legislative aide.
So well deserved. I almost wanted to break out into a song, but.
The outgoing music for council today should be happy birthday.
Oh, I wonder.
Respectfully submitting OTC.
Could our voice activated audio technicians do that as we leave? We'll see. Ms. Jost?
Thank you, Council President. I have three, three items. The first one is Grand Avenue, west of Snelling. The first phase of our first common scent project opened last night at 11 o'clock. So I'm really excited about that and I just want to, well, first appreciate the voters that voted for the 1% sales tax and then our council as well. We took action, we took a lot of action on this, but last year we took action on this first round of projects. And so it's really exciting to see, see the first one through and then there will be, you know, dozens more over the next several decades here. So really looking forward to that. It was a great success and the community and the businesses are really excited about it. The other two items I have are Halloween events this weekend. So this weekend, the Highland Business Association is hosting the Trick or Treat in Highland, which is an event I look forward to every year. It'll be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You don't need to sign up, it'll just be along businesses kind of centered around Ford Parkway in Cleveland. There is a map that will, our office will share of kind of where a good path generally is. And then the other one, and sorry, Council President, if you were going to share this, I guess this is technically in your ward, but the Grand Avenue Business Association that we share and I think some of the, the district councils as well are hosting a Boobash, which will take place at 857 Grand at the Gather Patio. So similarly, all the businesses on Grand Avenue will have places for, for kids and, and adults, I guess, to stop and trick or treat. So I think that's at, that's at 11 o'clock. I think that's 11 to, 11 to 2 o'clock. So I hope to make it to both. So hope folks will, will, will join us in the Halloween festivities across the city this weekend.
Thanks, Ms. Jost, and I'm planning to steal from Ward 1 today unless she says it first, so it's all good.
You got it.
No, you got it. You go for, we'll see if it's the same one.
Okay, well, in my ward, in spirit of the, the resolution that we passed earlier, thanks to Council President's leadership, we can share it together. On 394 Dayton Avenue on Monday, October 27th at 6:00 PM, it's going to be the, a gathering hosted by our partners that we recognize today. There will be a candlelight vigil for the victims and we're inviting all of our partners who's very impactful in this work to join us. And it's right in the heart of Ward 1, right near Dayton and Western Avenue. So I have not been able to make it in the past year, so I'm really excited if you all will, will join us.
Ditto. All right, any other good news? Otherwise, thanks so much for a packed day, a great day and a great meeting. We are adjourned.